And it's yeah, it's recording now. And as I again, welcome to the sixth joint Sangam Ducha Question and Answer and Study Session, organised by the Korean Friendship Association of the UK and the British Group for the Study of the Ducha Idea. And we have a number of questions on different subjects tonight, which we will be answering. I will call upon Comrade Alan Bolland, KFA UK Organisation Secretary and Head of KFA West of England and also Editor of People's Career at the Day, to give his answer to the first question that was sent in and then I'm good. So if you're ready, Alan, please go ahead. And I would ask everybody to mute their microphone if you're not speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. Thank you very much to come in for this meeting. That question, well, that would be, just let me find. Have a little problem, technical problem with computer now, but hopefully I will sort it. Well, I'm really sorry, there's this problem with my computer. Please give me one minute more. I just sorted, I just, I just sorted, okay. The question, which I bring it for this meeting is about Ducha Idea and the features, the features of Ducha Idea, independence, consciousness and creativity. So the question will be, are the features of Ducha Idea as independence, consciousness and creativity, were they developed in the process of historical development of society? Or are they features inherent in the human beings? And I give you answer what I think about this question. If the independence, consciousness and creativity are features from human beings, from human, from man, or being developed in the process of historical development of society, my answer for this, in my opinion, these three features of Ducha Philosophy, the basic ones and independence, consciousness and creativity are the characteristic of the human being that Ducha Philosophy has just discovered for the first time. These features are given by nature to man and distinguish him from animals. And they have developed in the historical process of development of society as well. And it is not limited only to Korean society, but these features are universal features of all societies in the world. Separate issue is what level they exist in socialist society, as in DPRK, they are at high level of development. And in these societies of capitalist countries, although they exist, also exist as natural human features, as particles of society, they are at low level in capitalist society. And they are suppressed by the capitalist system of imagination and exploitation of example, of which is low class consciousness, maintain in false state that everyone is equal, that's what they're saying in capitalist system, et cetera. Another example is very little responsibility for general social property and also absolutely not miss or low inspiration for social actions, alienation at work, class conflicts, et cetera. So in my opinion, the answer for that, these three characteristic features of human nature, in my opinion, are both inherent in man and given by nature itself. At the same time, they cannot remain stagnant. They develop in the process of development of social life of every person in society, every society in capitalist or socialist, but different scale, the scale, the conditions allow to develop them as objective conditions, they develop, they develop their features, the conditions, objective conditions of the environment in which the man is life. This environment can support the development of independence only when the person has all the basic nature needs and biological needs meet to sufficient extent, which is food, security and so others. And this is the case in the socialist society in the DPRK, which provides all the basic needs for man's development, for his development and higher levels, intellectual creativity develops in connection with the consciousness that grows in conditions favourable to this development, that is, conditions when person can as a free and independent being, be the master of his own life without enslavement and consciously directed, change the world and adapt it word to his needs and aspiration, just like his wants as a human being for him and mutual relation to others. So the answer generally is the features independence, consciousness and creativity are created by nature and is the features of every man given by nature and also are developed by process in society, in socialist system or capitalist system, but in different scale, different stages. Thank you very much for listening.
Right, thank you very much, Alan, for, for your answer. I'm going to give my answer now and also to the other questions. So, I mean, the first question was posed by KFA UK. Question, are the features of the Ducha Idea as independence, consciousness and creativity, were they developed in the process of historical development of society? Or are they features inherent in human beings? So my answer is as follows. Independence, creative, creativity and consciousness are the features of human beings according to the philosophical principle of the Ducha Idea. In his work on, titled On the Ducha Idea, that was published on the 31st of March 1982, the great leader, comrade Kim Jong-il, defined independence, creativity and consciousness as the intrinsic features of man, pointing out that, and I quote, "Man holds a special position and plays a special role as master of the world because he is a social being with independence, creativity and consciousness", end of quotation. All three are interlinked. Without independence, there can be no creativity and without creativity, there can be no independence. And one has to be, have consciousness to be aware of both. Whilst independence, creativity and consciousness are intrinsic features of human beings, it doesn't mean that a human is automatically born with them, far from it. The Ducha Idea is a philosophy which is firmly rooted in materialism and not idealism. Such qualities are the attributes of a social being. In other words, they are formed only in society as a result of social action. Here is an example, there are several different accounts of feral children or wolf boys who were raised by animals and as a result, they walked on all fours, ate with their hands or indeed simply bit into food and could not speak. And it took a long time to rehabilitate them into human society. It is correct to say that independence, creativity and consciousness have developed throughout history, although not always in a smooth and steady upward manner. They have developed as a result of the struggle of humans to master nature and in the struggle against different exploiting systems such as slavery, feudalism and capitalism. As Comrade Kim Jong-il said, and I quote, "As history advances, man's position and role as master of the world is strengthened and the extent of people's domination over the world increases daily through their independent, creative and conscious struggle. In our time, the masses of people have emerged as the masters of the world and through their struggle, the world is being changed more and more to serve the masses. Today, the position and role of the masses of the people as masters of the world are becoming stronger than before. This reality proves patently the validity and vitality of the Prince of Ducha Philosophy, that man is the master of everything and decides everything", end of quotation. Independence, creativity and consciousness will fully flower under Ducha orientated socialism. And I recommend the, the following, the little booklet that we will be reading, I will be reading from later, Ducha Idea Answers to 100 Questions. And I should just drop that in, in the, the chat. There we are, that's dropped in, in the chat. Okay. Right, and I would also recommend that people read the section titled Philosophical Principle in the Work on the Ducha Idea. And I strongly also recommend the collection of works titled On the Ducha Philosophy. Onto the next question that was posed by KFA Germany. Question, does People's Career have the freedom of travel into another country? For example, can a DPRK citizen visit South Africa or Brazil or some other country? Answer, Article 75 of the DPRK Socialist Constitution states that, and I quote, "Citizens have the freedom of residence and travel", end of quotation. DPRK citizens do indeed travel abroad and not only travel, but sometimes work, live or study abroad. I have met many DPRK citizens who have visited foreign countries, you know, I've been, we've set more than one person in the DPRK who studied in Britain. I also met someone who had worked as a doctor in Africa. And, you know, when I've been returning to the, from the DPRK on the plane or the train, obviously, I still, many DPRK citizens actually travelling outside the country. And, you know, recently, it was reported that a delegation of the Socialist Patriotic Youth League of the DPRK left to participate in the World Festival of Youth and Students in Russia. The guy that we had in April 2012, Professor Ri Mew Il of Kimmelsong University, had actually stayed in Britain for a few months in the Kentish town of Faversham as part of an exchange course between the DPRK and the University of Kent at Canterbury. Professor Ri had even visited Poundland, the famous budget British shop, and said to us, and quote, "Where would British people be without Poundland?", end of quote. And indeed, where would we be without Poundland? It should actually be remembered that some countries like the US actually ban the entry of DPRK citizens and others restrict the entry of DPRK citizens to their countries. You know, it's actually very difficult for DPRK citizen to actually get a British visa now. In 2017, the resolution of the UN Security Council actually banned DPRK citizens from working abroad. This, this is a fact. And, you know, I would say also considerations of the massive cost, the expense and currency conversion have tended to limit the ability of DPRK citizens to travel abroad. And the following question was posed by Comrade Ben from KFA Scotland, and it's similar to the one above. And it was, can workers in the DPRK travel abroad? If so, under what conditions? If workers are somewhat restricted, do workers understand the need for a careful approach to worker travel? Is it clear when the conditions might be relaxed? And my answer, well, first of all, I think much of this, a lot of this question's been covered by my response to the above question. And I would point out that I think there's a false distinction made by certain hostile forces, notably the infamous NK News Gang and their ilk is made between workers and party officials. And, you know, they like to talk about an elite in the DPRK, which is not true. In fact, the Workers' Party Korea has millions of members and most of its members are workers. Workers in the DPRK do indeed travel abroad as part of delegations of trade unions. For instance, a DPRK trade union delegation recently left to visit Brazil and, you know, other organisations such as the Youth League or in sporting or cultural delegations. It seems that there is, it's often thrown at the DPRK by so-called critics that people in DPRK cannot allegedly travel abroad, but I would throw this back at such people. Firstly, why so much emphasis on travelling abroad? You know, why is it seen as so important? Secondly, remember that most Americans in fact do not have passports, I believe only 3% or 10% of Americans have passports and only a minority of Americans travel abroad. And by the way, has anyone ever seen a black American tourist abroad? Answers on a postcard, please. Question, and also raised by Comrade Ben from KFA Scotland. My understanding is that workers retire at 55 or 60 and that retired life is secure and good, healthy food, healthcare, recreation, which many pensioners in our country don't even have at 67, but little extra income unless you have the higher pension of super contributors like war veterans, party officials recognise contributors, is that correct? If not, can you basically explain the size of pension income compared to regular DPRK workers and what it can buy? Also, can a worker retire with an official pension but still continue working, i.e. half-time to increase their income? And my answer is, basically, in addition to their old age pension, aged people in the DPRK actually receive a lot of additional benefits. In this respect, it's useful to refer to the report, the DPRK Human Rights Association 2014, I quote from it. "The aged people are the old generation who dedicated all their wisdom and enthusiasm to the development of the state and society, as well as the creation of economic and cultural wealth. It is the DPRK policy to treat the aged people with respect and look after their health and life in a responsible manner. The state makes steady investment in protecting the aged people, makes efforts to provide them with a civilised and happy life. It also puts emphasis on education, in socialist ethics and fine traits." So that assistance, respect and care for aged people becomes a trend of society. In the DPRK, the obligation of supporting the aged people is assigned to their spouses and also to their sons and daughters and grandchildren, who live together or not. Their brothers and sisters can also be supporters. The aged people receive pension and state aid of various kinds, even if they have their supporters, they can receive state support according to their requests. The aged people have the right to possess and dispose of their personal properties as well as the right to receive health checkup and treatment on a regular basis and the health institutions in charge and medical institutions. The aged people are entitled to be supplied with nutritional foods, stuffs and tonics rich in micronutrients like vitamin and calcium on a preferential basis according to their physiological characteristics. They can participate in different sports activities and have the right to be provided with conditions necessary for normal exercises, including rhythmic gymnastics and taekwondo. People over 100 years old receive the social benefits specified by the state. Old people, according to their hopes, can go for vacation, sightseeing, tourism and excursion in the days of spring and autumn. They, according to their will and ability, can participate in very social activities and operate work teams or associations for merited workers or the old people. Government organs at all levels have non-permanent protection committee for aged people in order to actually carry out the policy of protecting old people, end of quotation. And just to answer the other part of Ben's question, people in the DPRK can in fact work beyond retirement age and can both receive the pension and work at the same time, whether it is full-time or part-time. And again, when I've been in the DPRK, I met several people who had reached pension age but through their own choice had continued to work. And the next question, question, how is it possible to switch careers? Assume you were offered a spot in mechanical engineering and you studied and qualified, began work, and then five years later you decide you want to work in agricultural engineering, would that be possible? And that question also came from Ben from KFA Scotland. And the answer is, well, first of all, if you're actually a party member, a member of the Workers' Party of Korea, you can be sent or directed to work in, you know, whichever field the party decides, you know, this is party discipline. However, if you're a non-party member, then you can switch careers according to your choice. Now, for example, the guide for our delegation in April 2017, Ms. Kyul Nam Hee had originally been a translator for the DPRK Ministry of Agriculture. However, she did not like being a translator, she told us, as she felt, in her own words, that she was a servant and not a master. So instead, she became a teacher of English language and life sciences at Kimmelsong University. And I think that is a practical example that shows that you can indeed, under certain conditions in the DPRK, actually switch jobs, you know, if you're not a party member. And your last question, question from Paula from KFA and Delicia, KFA Spain. And it says as follows, considering the possible future reopenings of the UK, German, Swedish embassies in the DPRK, what are the chances that these countries will also allow DPRK embassies in their countries too? Will it entail a risk for the DPRK to accept these Western embassies in their country? Again, take into consideration the possibility that they might try to harm the way of life of DPRK? Or will it be a good chance for the DPRK to expand trading packs? And my answer is as follows. In fact, DPRK embassies actually do exist in the UK, in Germany and Sweden, although in the case of the embassy in the UK, it has a small number of staff and deals with more than one country. DPRK embassies abroad are actually limited now in their activities by the UN sanctions, which states, you know, that they, they can only engage in strictly diplomatic activities as defined by the UN. And whilst I think it is indeed true that accepting Western embassies in the DPRK does pose a risk, because such embassies will carry out espionage activities as well as anti-socialist and anti-communist subversion and also ideological and cultural infiltration. But the DPRK knows this well, it's aware of this fact and is prepared to deal with it by carrying out a struggle against ideological and cultural infiltration. And the DPRK state security and public security organs stand ready to deal with any anti-socialist subversion by imperialist and capitalist countries. In theory, the reopening of Western embassies in the DPRK could lead to increased trade with the DPRK, but unfortunately, it is unlikely because of the UN, US and EU sanctions against the DPRK. And, you know, I would just still like to give my opinion here, Britain, after Brexit, should have torn up the sanctions against the DPRK, you know, the, both the UK sanctions and the UN and US sanctions and massively expanded trade with People's Korea. I mean, this, this would have been a solution to the Brexit issue. However, you know, that wasn't done. Anyway, that concludes my, my answers. I hope people found the answers useful and I, you know, I can take one or two very quick questions as we have time, but, you know, I wouldn't have prepared an answer. So if anyone wants to ask a quick question, please do so. And Comrade Jeremy has got his hand up. Yes, go ahead, Jeremy.
Yes, maybe about the UN sanctions. It's very important to point out that these sanctions are called UN sanctions, but they are made by the UN Security Council, which is made off of, I think, 15 members and from which are permanent. These five members are the USA, Russia, China, Great Britain and France. These five members are the USA, Russia, China, Great Britain and France. That's another single country from the Non-Aligned Movement, which is a permanent member. These permanent members aren't elected. And if they don't like, they can just block it. The US does Palestine right now. Palestine right now. So the UN has almost every country of the world represented. But these are UN sanctions, approved by these countries. Approved by the NATO countries, must control the UN Security Council. By Great Britain, France and the USA. Not one single non-aligned country in this council. Not one single country from Africa, not one single country from Latin America. Three of these power members are NATO members. America, Britain and France. And yes, this is a very unfair system. That's why I think the UN is a very democratic system. And this UN sanction thing is very confusing. Because it looks like the World Community is sanctioning Korea, but that's not the case. It's a very small minority of imperialist countries were doing the sanctions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Well, of course, the UN Security Council is a marionette of US imperialism. And unfortunately, if it passes the sanctions, you know, these become, you know, these become enforceable by the UN. You know, I think it's slightly splitting hairs to say whether these are UNSC sanctions, UN Security Council sanctions or UN sanctions. I mean, in my opinion, the UN itself does not represent international opinion because it is very heavily dominated, as you say, by the US and by Western countries. So, you know, I think there is a need to fully reform and change the UN so it becomes more representative of world opinion. Just looking at David's question, I mean, I'm hoping to get out to the DPRK, you know, soon. So, you know, I hope to be bringing back some in-some tea with me, which we, you know, if I have spare box, I will put it on sale at, say, a meeting, you know. So, yeah, yes, you know, the best way to get DPRK products is to visit the DPRK. I mean, you might be able to buy some DPRK products from China or Russia. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Right, yes, Jeremy.
I guess we once watched a film, I don't remember the name, it was about a young worker in the DPRK living in Pyongyang, who had very honorable parents, who did a lot for the country and the party. But this son was very lazy. I think, I don't know the name, but I think you know which film I'm talking about, right?
Yes, I think so.
I guess, and at the beginning, he's repressed, that's very lazy. And you can see it's during the address of the place in the address market. And that we can see places some kind of video game device. So I wanted to ask, does the DPRK actually produce video game devices or are they imported?
The DPRK produces video games, for instance, like Pyongyang Racer. And there were also a number of anti-imperialist video games and anti-South Korean video games. Given that, I think, you know, I'm not 100% sure, I would have to, would have to ask. But I think they do actually indeed produce their own devices. It's a safe assumption as they produce mobile phones and also tablets. You know, they definitely produce tablets, you know. Some of my guides, you know, had tablets. And one of my guides actually used the sort of tablet for translation quite a lot.
Do you know if it's possible to play these anti-South Korean games here in Europe? Or would it be possible to get them?
I mean, I can ask, I can ask. I mean, they, they were put on the internet by hostile forces in a few years ago. But there was, there was one game where you could whack the South Korean mole with a hammer. But, I mean, I can try and ask when I'm in the DPRK. Okay, Victor from Russia, you've put your hand up. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you very much for your speech. I have one question. How likely is that relations between DPRK and American puppets on the south of Korea will improve after the resignation of South Korea President Yoon Suk-yol and maybe the election of a new president of South Korea from a left front? And do you think that North Korea will resume the dialogue on motherland reunification, which was stopped some time ago? Thank you.
Right, thank you very much for your question. I think that's a very good question. Basically, South Korea has been defined by the DPRK as the number one enemy of the DPRK, and it's been designated as hostile. And if you, it's interesting to read the documents on the Ninth Plenum of the Central Committee of the Workers' Party of Korea and also from the session of the Supreme People's Assembly, as well as the statements made by Comrade Kim Yo-jeong, Vice Department Director of the Workers' Party of Korea. And, you know, reading through them, it's very clear that the DPRK came to the conclusion that with South Korea, there's no basic real difference between conservative and liberal regimes or fascist or liberal regimes, that all of them have the same idea of basically overthrowing the socialist system in the DPRK, you know, by one way, by one means or another. And, you know, that was very clear. The DPRK for many years tried to make peace with South Korea. It entered into dialogue, in fact, even held five into Korean summits. The first one being, as you know, in 2000. And, you know, nothing was achieved. And liberal puppets like Moon Jae-in, you know, were just as bad as the fascist puppets. And Moon Jae-in had the idea of destroying the socialist system in the DPRK. And I can remember when there was the summit in 2018. The South Korean puppets came out with all sorts of wild claims, like, oh, the DPRK was going to give up its socialist system, they're going to open McDonald's in Pyongyang, et cetera, et cetera, you know. And, you know, this showed their intent to destroy the socialist system in the DPRK. And they did not move back from that, as, as, you know, that idea. So I don't think there can be any illusion about, you know, different parties and factions in South Korea or different tendencies. They all just represent different factions within the South Korean ruling class. And, you know, so I don't think any illusion should be, you know, entertained by them. And, you know, this, this is a clear, a clear fact. You know, it's a clear fact. And, you know, I don't think the replacement of Yoon by another regime in South Korea would make any difference whatsoever at all. And the only prospect I would see for reunification would be, you know, through war or through the South Korean regime, being overthrown by a popular revolution. And I don't see any other way. And so that concludes my answer. Hope you found that interesting and useful. Right, is there anyone else who wants to raise a question? No one else? Alan, do you want to add anything to the discussion?
Maybe I want to mention, if that is a little bit out of topic, about this accident, what happened with the South American soldiers being burned in the protest in Gaza, what's going on? Yes, the DPRK mentioned anything about this, if you know any press or anything that mentioned about the American soldiers being burned, suicide in front of embassy, you would say. It was an embassy, I don't remember exactly what it was. If you can say anything about, please, thank you.
It was actually, I believe, a US Air Force soldier or person, Aaron Bushnell. And he emoliated himself, burnt himself to death in front of the Israeli embassy in the US as protest against the genocide in Gaza. So far, the DPRK media have not reported it, but I'm sure they will report it soon. I mean, I will check all DPRK websites. Maybe it's mentioned on the DPRK MFA website rather than casing, hey, but I will check. Right, Paula, you've put your hand up, please go ahead. I can't actually hear, your microphone is very faint. I think you need to adjust it or perhaps put the comment in the chat.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes, slightly better, yes, slightly better.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask a question that has been actually on my head today. I don't know if you know about the BRICS Intergovernmental Organization, that is between Brazil, Russia, India, China, all of these countries. I was wondering, is by any chance the DPRK planning on joining this alliance? By any chance or not?
Right, thanks for the question. And I think that's something that comes up a lot now. The DPRK has made no public statement about joining BRICS. And I've seen nothing to indicate that they are actually considering joining. The DPRK has a policy of not joining any blocs. And in the past, it did not join the Council for Mutual Economic Assistance or the Warsaw Pact. That's, that's a fact. So, I mean, my guess is that probably they won't join BRICS or, you know. I mean, possibly, I don't know if they, there's, you know, a sort of ruling that could allow them to have observer status. But I think certainly for the time being, there are no moves by the DPRK to join BRICS.
Yeah, that was my idea because, I mean, I had the doubt. But I was thinking that, of course, during the revolution against the Japanese imperialists, they also refused to belong to any kind of bloc to have their independence and not having to depend on anyone else, like, for example, the international or something like that. But it's good to know, just to, just to check, thank you.
Right, okay, are there any further questions? Yes, Jeremy, go ahead.
Maybe about the BRICS topic. I didn't read anything about the DPRK wanting to join. But at the website of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the DPRK, I read some positive articles about the BRICS. In some comrades of mine used for articles. And it's right what, the Hudson said that the DPRK is a non-aligned country and didn't join the Warsaw Treaty or any other blocs. But interestingly, BRICS is also non-aligned countries joined. And the DPRK always supported the self-suff cooperation, which I think the BRICS could be a platform to strengthen.
Thank you, Jeremy, for, for that. And I also would just comment, the Wikipedia is usually, is usually very inaccurate on the DPRK. It's written by South Koreans. I mean, I don't think you can really trust what the Wikipedia says about the DPRK. It's not, it's not accurate. Okay.
I think you're going to say anything about Wikipedia. I said that there are many articles on the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Or what?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's in the chat that Victor has put up at Wikipedia.
Okay, sorry.
I was just making the general comment. Okay, are there any more questions? Okay, well, if this is out, and then we will conclude the Q and A. And, you know, we'll obviously be back again. And this is from the book, Juche Adia Answers to One, Answers to 100 Questions. This This is is question 14. Why is independence the life and soul for man? And the answer is independence is the life and soul for man. When independence is referred to as man's life and soul, it means the social and political integrity, the physical life is what keeps man alive as a biological organism. Whereas the social and political integrity is what keeps him alive as a social being. For man, a social being, the social and political integrity is more precious than physical life. If he is deserted by society and loses in political independence, he is like a dead man as a social being, even though he is alive physically. Question 15. What is creativity? Creativity is an attribute of a social being who transforms the world and shapes his destiny purposefully and consciously. By dint of creativity, man transforms nature and society to make them more useful and beneficial to him by changing the old into the new. Man breeds new varieties of animals and plants and invents new machines and instrument and develops new ideas and knowledge and establishes a new social system by transforming things and phenomena in the world that surrounds him on the basis of understanding them. New things and happenings come into being by the activities of man who changes the old into the new. He makes not only quite new things, but what is needed for his life by transforming nature and society on the level he has already reached. In other words, he changes the useless and harmful things in nature and society into the useful and beneficial ones and makes what is less useful and beneficial more useful and beneficial. Creativity, creativity is not the special quality of some individual persons, but a mode of activity peculiar to man, a social being. 16. What is consciousness? Answer: Consciousness is an attribute of a social being that determines all his activities to understand and reshape the world and himself. By means of consciousness, man understands the world and the law that governs its movement and transforms and develops nature and society in line with his demand. Man conceives the plan of his action through thought before starting cognition and transforming. Conceiving and planning are the first processes of the activities to cognize and transform are a key factor that ensures the purpose of cognition and practice. In other words, the cognition and practice of man are the process of conceiving an idea and making a plan and putting them into practice. This shows that all activities conducted by man are consciously controlled actions. When man encounters a series of problems and situations in the course of cognition and transformation, he neither sits idle nor goes on with what he is doing without proper measures. He copes with them positively and adjusts and controls all these activities so that he can achieve the goals of his activities. 17. How are independence, creativity and consciousness interrelated? Independence, creativity and consciousness. The intrinsic features of man are closely related with each other. Independence is a factor that brings into play creativity. Man transforms the world and carves out his destiny purposely and consciously because excuse me, he wants to live and develop as the master of the world and his destiny, free from restrictions and subjugation nature and society. Creativity ensures the realization of independence. Man can translate independence into reality as he has creativity. The fuller he gives play to creativity, the better he can put independence into practice. Consciousness is a prerequisite for independence and creativity. It ensures the display of independence and creativity. It regulates all the moments and processes of human activities and governs the level and degree of the exhibition of independence and creativity. 18. Why are independence, creativity and consciousness called social attributes? Answer: Independence, creativity and consciousness are the social attributes that are formed and developed into the, the social historical cause. They are not given to man by nature, they are unthinkable apart from man's highly developed organism. But the organism itself does not produce them. Independence, creativity and consciousness did not exist in any embryonic form before society came into being. Man could possess them in the course of forming a social community and living in it. They are the requirements and reflection of social life and social practice. They develop constantly as social life and social practice do. 19. What is the essence of the world defined by the Juche idea? The Juche idea has newly provided a man-centered outlook on the world. The essence of the world, the Juche idea has expanded, is that the world is dominated and transformed by man. Question 20. What does it mean that the world is dominated by man? Answer: That the world is dominated by man means that nature and society are the objects which are in the service of translating his demand for independence and interests into reality. Man is a special being who is superior and the most powerful in the world. There is no relation of dominating and being subject to between all and the material beings that compromise nature and society, but a simple one of being dependent on and restricting each other. The relationship between man and surrounding world, however, is not one of being simply dependent on and restricting each other, but that are dominating and being subject to. That the world is dominated by man does not necessarily mean that all things and phenomena in the world are actually dominated by man. There are still myriads of things and phenomena in the world that are out of human domination. More and more of them will be put under human control as the demand for independence. Creativity, creative ability of man grow with the development of human history. So I'll leave that one there. I'm now going to move on to questions and answers on Songham Idea. As I did put it in the links for the discussion, I'll just quickly put put it in the chat that people should be familiar with this book.
Comrade, would it be okay if we would make a silent minute for our brothers and sisters in Palestine, who got murdered by the Israelism who fought from the US imperialists?
Well, we can do that, you know, at the, or we can actually do it now and then move, you know, I can read from the next book. So, yeah, I mean, we will observe a minute's silence starting from now. Or mute your microphones, please. Right, okay, the minute's up. I'm now going to read from questions and answers on the Songham Idea. And then we will conclude the session. And it is as follows, question 40. What is the position of the Popular Masses in the main agency of the revolution? And the answer is as follows. Of the main agency of the revolution, the Popular Masses are directly in charge of the revolution. The Masses are the masters of the revolution, construction and the decisive force that transforms nature and revolutionizes society. The revolutionary struggle and construction work are undertakings to realize the independence of the Popular Masses which fall on their own shoulders. The revolutionary movement is impossible apart from the Popular Masses. So the Masses are the principal constituent of the main agency of the revolution. Question 41. What is the position of the army in the main agency of the revolution? Answer: The army is the central force in the main agency of the revolution. It is a powerful force that beats all sorts of counter-revolutionary forces established. It's a genuine people's social system, defends the gains of the revolution and vigorously accelerates overall socialist construction. Even the Popular Masses, the main factor of history can take up their position and play their part as the main agency of the revolution, only when they rely on the army. Question 42. What is the position of the party and the leader in the main agency of the revolution? Answer: The party and leader constitutes the nucleus and center of the main agency of the revolution. The party is the general staff and the leader is the brains of the revolution and construction. The correct guidance of the party and the leader is the decisive guarantee for preparing the Popular Masses to be genuine masters of the revolution and construction and for fostering the army into the main force of the revolution. The people and the army can take up their positions and play their role as masters in revolution, construction only when they are awakened and organized under the guidance of the party and the leader. Question 43. What is the essential feature of the main agency of the revolution? Answer: The main agency of the revolution is an ideological crystal into which all people centering around the army have been united with the party and the leader as its nucleus. It is an organizationally united body of the people with a leader as the central guide and the army as the pivot and model. Further, it is an integral whole in which the army and people are united morally and dutifully around the party and the leader. Question 44. What is elucidated by the theory of the revolutionary soldier spirit? Answer: In the theory of the revolutionary soldier spirit, the Songham idea elucidates the loftiest revolutionary spirit in the present day is the revolutionary soldier spirit created and displayed by the army and comprehensively clarifies the intrinsic features of the spirit and its position and role in the revolution and construction. Question 45. What is the revolutionary soldier spirit? Answer: The revolutionary soldier spirit is a lofty revolutionary spirit of soldiers that consists of the spirits in of guarding the leader with one's very life, implementing the party's policies at the risk of one's life and sacrificing oneself heroically. Question 46. What is the spirit of guarding the leader with one's very life? Answer: It is the spirit of guarding the personal safety of the leader, defending his authority and dignity and adhering to his thoughts and lines at the risk of one's life with absolute trust in him. Question 47. Why is the spirit of defending the leader with one's very life the most important content of the revolutionary soldier spirit? Answer: Only when there is the leader can there be the army and its development and can the revolution come off victoriously. The ultimate mission of the army, therefore, is defending the leader with their very lives. The spirit of defending the leader in the face of death is the foremost ideological and spiritual feature of the army and its life and soul. The revolutionary spirit is inconceivable part in the spirit of guarding the leader with one's very life. The spirit of death-defying defense leader is very hard, is the very heart of the revolutionary soldier spirit. And question 48. What does it mean that the spirit of defending the leader with one's very life is the very heart of the revolutionary soldier spirit? It means that the spirit of defending the leader with one's very life, as the central idea and spirit of the revolutionary soldier spirit defines all its other ideological and spiritual contents and controls, processes of their manifesta- manifestation. The spirits of desperate implementation and heroic sacrifice which make up the revolutionary soldier spirit are based on the spirit of death-defying defense of the leader. So they are the lofty fighting spirit. 14, question 49. What is the spirit of desperate implementation? Answer: The spirit of desperate implementation is spirit of accepting the ideas, lines, orders, instructions of the party and leader as the most equitable ones and as supreme orders and carrying them out correctly without fail. And so I will conclude there. And we will conclude the session now. We will be back. I will stop